Planning Board is now in session. It's Monday, June 8th. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner. And it's the same, uh, https backslash, uh, colon backslash, backslash, www.southboroughtown.com backslash remote meetings. Now I will turn the, uh, voice over to Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Brian Shea. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Uh, call the Board of Selectmen meeting for June 8th, 2020, 7:00 PM to order as well and pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website, www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And as I understand, in addition to myself, Selectman Healy, Brascio, and Stivers are present, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we are in order as well. Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Um, our first agenda item-
I'm sorry. So I think that probably Dorian should read for Shopsey as well since they have a quorum. Sorry to interrupt. Does that make sense? If Board of Selectmen has to.
Does Dorian know that?
Yes, she's prepared to read it.
Okay. Don, is that all right with you?
Sure.
Okay.
Am I on?
You're all set. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. I'm calling the Shopsey Board of Directors meeting to order for Monday, June 8th, 2020. Oh, my cat is jumping on my, my computer now. Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate may do so in the following manner, www.southboroughtown.com backslash remote meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And I do believe we have a quorum.
Uh, yes, yes. Alex Fish is here. Jesse Stein is here. Lisa Brascio is here. And you are here.
So, um, hi, Dorian and others. I don't think I read that last paragraph of the announcement. The paragraph that says no in-person attendance of mi- of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by going to I think we've all read that in full. So our first agenda item is, and Karina, we're gonna, are we gonna do the public hearing with everyone on, or are we gonna go straight to the housing production?
Um, I think if we can move through the public hearings rather quickly, then we should do that. If there is consensus with the planning board members, I just want to point out that Katie Barry is here as an attendee representing the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I did hear back from her regarding that they are all set. The Zoning Board of Appeals appears to be all set with their proposed zoning bylaw changes, Article 29, which is the second public hearing on the agenda.
So if there's no objection, we'll launch into our agenda in order.
Hey, Don?
Yeah, Jesse.
Can I make- a ju- I, I, the housing production plan should be relatively brief. And I, I just would suggest that we go right to that, and then we can work the rest of the agenda later. Just because we have the two other committees on the same call.
True, that's true. We do have the two other committees here specifically for the housing production plan and the consultants. So maybe it is best to take, pull that forward if it's appropriate.
Okay, that, that helps the others. So let's do that. It, it, on our agenda, it's a discussion item, the housing production plan. And I believe at this point I call on Sarah.
Uh, yeah, and I'm actually going to call on Roberta and Courtney. They are both unmuted at the moment. And I'm gonna promote them so we can see them.
You may want to give a quick intro to who they are, Sarah.
Uh, Courtney and Roberta are consultants that we have been working with through Community Opportunities Group. We've been working very diligently for a few months now to get the required DHCD document, the housing production plan, all up and running. Lots of community engagement. They did many, many stakeholder interviews, thank you, interviews around the community. We also did a survey, um, which got, um, you know, quite a few responses, um, over 250. And then also did a community outreach forum at, um, the, uh, senior center. So, uh, they've put together what I think is a, you know, fair document for this DHCD requirement that we have to meet for the town. So, um, I'll let them take over from here.
And also the purpose of this, these joint meetings this evening is because the DHCD, I believe, requires that the planning board sign off and the Board of Selectmen also sign off on the Housing Production Plan document that they'll cog, Community or Opportunities Group will be submitting to the DHCD. So we're hoping that, um, everybody's on board and, um, the goal is a, a supportive vote from both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. Sorry, Sarah, just had to add that.
That's it, that's it.
So Courtney, I guess, Sarah, you gonna have Courtney and Roberta?
Yeah, I, I-
Well, I can, I can see you guys. It's just without seeing Roberta, I can't look at her to see whether or not she's gonna speak first.
I, it said that there, it was, she was-
She's here. I could, I could see her promoted. She's muted right now.
Okay, well, okay, there we go.
There we are.
Hi, Courtney.
It's hard, it's hard to do this with my partner when I can't see her face. Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you for being here tonight. Um, as Karina and, um, and Sarah have mentioned, we have been working for the past several months to put together a housing production plan for the Town of Southborough. Uh, the purpose of the plan is to look at the town's, um, progress on affordable housing, um, identify potential barriers to creating additional affordable housing and diversifying the housing stock, and identify strategies moving forward for the town to be able to meet its housing production targets as identified by the state in order to be able to, um, meet both, uh, the Chapter 40B requirements that 10% of the town's year-round housing be deep restricted as affordable housing. And also, sorry, there, there's a dog in here with me and he's moving. Now he's making noise. I'm so sorry. This is a challenge. Um, but, uh, to ensure that the town is meeting its, um, production numbers and also, um, when the town does meet its production numbers, it allows the town to, um, be in what is known as Safe Harbor, which gives the town discretion with review to 40B applications.
And one thing that I would just add is that approval of this housing production plan by the town's boards does not equate to making a commitment to carry out everything that is recommended in the plan. It's an endorsement of the, the, the goal that is set to meet the 10% affordability and to carry out the strategies that are recommended in the plan. But as I said, it's, it's an endorsement rather than a firm commitment. There isn't a stick that comes after you if you, if you don't do everything that you say you're, you aim to do in your plan.
And just to follow up on that part of why that is, is because the state has, uh, specific areas. Um, there's a specific format to this plan that the state expects and has certain things that it wants you to address within the plan. That is not to say that the state's outline is necessarily consistent with what is going to be best for Southborough and Southborough's priorities. It's just to say that there's a template to work with and we take that template and move beyond that to, uh, come up with viable, uh, potential strategies that would improve production targets.
So, at this point in the meeting, is it appropriate for each board to entertain a motion to, is it approve the plan?
It would be a recommendation to endorse it.
Mr. Stein.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Southborough Planning Board recommend to endorse the housing production plan as submitted.
Um, second for discussion?
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Mrs. Latrell.
Um, I did have some comments. I don't know. I sent them to Sarah. I don't know if they were voted to-
I hope the ladies did receive those comments.
Okay. Um, so, the one thing, that I want to bring up was, um, it states in the housing production plan that, um, Southborough, um, made a deliberate effort to, uh, homogenize our housing through local zoning. And I don't think that's necessarily true. We did have an MRD that, um, up until the Wall Street case was required for all, um, subdivisions over 10 units. Then it was knocked down to eight. We do have the over 55, which, um, was, I think, intended to be affordable for seniors, although it hasn't worked out that way. And I think the town has made efforts to, um, have different types of housing for, uh, different economic, uh, levels. So I thought that was a little, that statement was harsh.
I think the, um, overall, the, what that statement is trying to say is, and it's borne by the data, is that over time, the regulations have required more land to build less, which tends to have an impact that fewer, that, you know, it does homogenize the housing stock because it tends to lead to larger single-family homes, which is borne out by the actual data of what has been built over the last, you know, 50 years or so. One thing to consider too is that we're looking at an extended timeline because Southborough's history didn't start 30 years ago. Um, you know, we're looking at the historic development patterns, particularly in the villages, and kind of what is hap-, you know, and then we're looking at when the zoning actually came in, which was much later than much of the development in Southborough. And then we're looking at recent trends from the 70s, 80s, 90s, and the aughts to see what actually was built, what the land consumption rate was, and what style of housing was built. And the practical effect of the regulations has been more of a homogenization, even though there have been these efforts in regulation to diversify the issues with the regulations in terms of functionality and practice has somewhat prevented a, you know, a completely effective diverse, you know, you know, practice. It's, you've made efforts, there's still, the point is that there's more effort to be made if that's going to be a goal of Southborough, to produce different types of housing beyond the single-family home.
Okay, but the result of homogenization is different from a deliberate attempt by the town.
I would say that downzoning and reducing the, in, I would, I would say that they're, that really is the impact. And so it is a deliberate effort when it goes to town meeting and 66% of people or more vote to do, to make certain decisions, particularly those decisions that preclude development, that in practice, again, you know, that it's one, you know, the regulations are one thing, but when the regulations don't, you know, can't practically be built on any of the lots in Southborough, it's not really, it's not really making a significant change. And so the intent isn't necessarily to be pejorative. I understand what your concern is. It's just from a more broad and, uh, perspective, particularly that of an outsider, the impact really has the, you know, there have been certain decisions that were made that have had an impact to, you know, to reduce development opportunities. They're not just in zoning. They're, you know, this is, this is a common occurrence. This isn't unique to Southborough by any stretch of the imagination. And so it's one of the things that we do try to highlight in our reports is that what seems like an innocuous thing can in turn, you know, what achieves one objective on one side sometimes does not achieve an objective on another side. Like Southborough has, you know, at obvious water protection concerns, and what achieves an objective on a water protection concern side might not necessarily lead to a lot of housing production. And so it's looking at kind of the balance of the totality of what's been happening. And I think that, you know, there has been an effort to, you know, particularly for water protection to reduce, you know, housing development, and that's a, you know, that is both a legitimate thing, but then there's us, you know, it's, it's a question of, uh, degree. And so, but one thing I will say is it was never intended to be pejorative.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mrs. Latrell, I, my comments to Sarah were similar. And quite related to that, in that the town has for a long time, certainly as long as I've been on the board, which is almost 40 years, have, has tried to, uh, you know, get the affordable housing numbers up. And for various reasons over the years, we've had some success, but, um, not as much success as, as we wanted. But we've tried, and I thought that the document was a little bit light in, uh, recognizing the, uh, efforts of the town to get more affordable housing. But I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a big, big deal because the document is really excellent and, um, it, it's history. It's, what we've tried in the past is all behind us. And this document, even though it captures some of the past, it's really focused on the present and the future. And for me, that's fine. Is there any other questions or comments from the Planning Board, uh, relative to the motion to, um, accept? What was it?
Endorse.
Endorse.
Sorry, I think it was.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yeah.
Houlihan, yes. And just one comment. Andrew is in the attendees, just needs to be promoted into the panelists.
He just texted me. Mills, yes.
Does that count? Are you gonna, Sarah, are you gonna bump him up? Oh, here he comes.
Sarah, you're muted.
You're muted.
It's coming in right now. There he is.
Andrew.
Sorry about that.
Mills, yes.
Okay, it's, uh, five to zero. Uh, so, that's the Planning Board's piece of that. I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Shea.
Thank you. And I guess on behalf of our board, I will move that the Board of Selectmen endorse the plan as well. Is there a second?
I have a, allowed, everyone.
Second.
Talk. Everyone should be allowed.
Excellent. So it was moved and seconded on behalf of the board. Any board questions or comments?
Um, hi, Brian. Marty, can anybody hear me?
Yes, Marty. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, uh, two things. I think they're probably synonyms, but, um, I took a look at the, um, uh, the Mass Code of Regulations, and I, I just want to make sure I understand the process. Number one, it says that what, what the Selectmen, the Planning Board, and, and Conservation have to do is adopt. Again, adopt and endorse are close enough, but, but I, I, I would, I would amend your motion, Brian, since it's what the statute says, to move that we adopt the, um, the Town of Southborough Housing Production Plan dated April, 2020.
I will change my motion accordingly.
Um, and the second thing is just to understand, it, um, has Conservation addressed this yet, or are they planning to?
No.
It, the, the, the regulation says they have to.
Uh, Marty, which regulation are you referring to?
Um, the review and approval of housing production plans. It's Mass Code of Regulation, um, 760 dot, tell me if I'm on the wrong one. 760 CMR.
CMR, yeah, the 760 CMR. The plan requires the endorsement of the Planning Board and the adoption of the Board of Selectmen. Conservation is not tip, conservation is consulted as part of this, but their approval is not required generally.
Okay, can I just read it to you?
Yeah, sure.
It says, it says, this is, I'm reading from, from, it says, "Review and Approval of Housing Production Plans." "A HPP shall be adopted by the municipality's planning board, its conservation commission, and its select board or city council, following which the chief executive officer," and the statute defines chief executive officer as the Board of Selectmen, "may submit the HPP to the department for its approval." Uh, again, I, I think that's the right statute, and it seems to require the, 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 um, adoption by all three. If I'm wrong, that, I'm, if it's wrong, I'm wrong, but, but please point me to, to what I should be looking at instead of that language.
Courtney, any insight?
Marty, would it make any difference if, I, I mean, the last housing production plan, and Don can correct me if I'm wrong, did not get reviewed by Conservation four years ago.
I have to, I have to say that while we see, while we send it to Conservation for comments, we've never had them formally adopt. The only letter that ends up in the plan, then the one that goes to DHCD is signed by the Board of Selectmen.
Again, I hear everybody saying-
Yeah, I hear what you're saying too. I'm just saying that it's never been a part of our practice or any other housing production plan that I'm aware of or participated in, that Conserva-, that CONCOM was an improving body. I, I, it's not that I disagree with what you're saying. I'm just saying it's never been part of, um, part of what DHCD has actually asked for.
I, I'm not quite sure why, because that's, it's what the, again, it, it's legally, it's what's required.
I'm, I, I'm looking at Housing Production Plan Guidelines, and the submission requirements are that it is accompanied by a letter signed by the chief executive, and it has to have been adopted by the municipal planning board and select board or city council, but Planning Board and Select Board. Um, that, it does not have to be, there's no mention of Conservation Commission as being required to adopt it in order to, um, submit it to DHCD.
We would be happy to send you DHCD's policy guidelines document. Um, if Sarah can email us your, uh, your email address, and we'd be happy to provide that after the meeting. I don't want to send it while I'm, I'm doing this, but we'd be happy to send you the state's guidance of what they're, what, what they're looking for because we follow DHCD's guidelines.
Sure.
Whether or not DHCD follows state laws, it's something, but we follow DHCD's guidelines and what they've expressly, uh, published as to what they're looking for for this. Those guidelines were last updated two years ago, and so, um, that's the process that we follow. Uh, because I'm not gonna speak to higher level issues at DHCD, but-
I, I, I hear you. It's just the, the, legally what is required is what I'm reading. And I, 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 quite frankly, it's interesting that, that an agency might issue something, but that doesn't override a, a, you know, legally adopted, um, state regulation. So, again, I, it's just odd to me that there's a, there's a, there's a statutory scheme, there's a regulation, um, adopted pursuant to that scheme, and it's not ambiguous language. And it's just kind of odd to me that we just wouldn't follow that letter. That's all.
Hey, Marty, ask CONCOM to approve it or to endorse it.
Yeah, that's, it seems easy.
They'll do it. So, Marty, I don't think that there's anything precluding our board from taking action tonight on, and on adopting it. But I think the part of, that you read where it then ultimately gets passed along, we could hold off on doing that, because the executive body required to do so until Conservation acts on it as well and adopts it.
Yeah, no, no, that's my, that's, that is my point, because we're the ones that send it along. Um, and I, I would just be more comfortable if we were in line with what the statute, excuse me, what the regulation requires.
I don't disagree with that.
Sorry, um, Marty, this is Karina. Um, can you tell me again, that 760 CMR, what section you're citing?
It is, uh, I'm looking at a scroll here. It's 56 dot 03. Um, let me see what the sub, uh, subsection four E, and it's the first sentence of, um, that, of the first paragraph in subsection E, which is titled "Review and Approval of Housing Production Plans." And again, if I'm, if my research is off, then, then I apologize for taking up time and, and, um, but, but if that's the, if that is the, the, um, uh, the controlling regulation, I just think we should follow it.
And is that a current version? Is there a date to that version that you're reading?
Oh, boy. Um, I, it's off of, I got it off of, um, the DHCD. I went to their website. Um,
I'm looking at this because 5603 is a lot about, um, actual, like, basis for denials for, uh, comprehensive permits, and so I'm looking for the specific subsection to see whether-
It's 4E.
Okay, so it's 5603 4E.
Yep.
Okay.
Again, it's titled "Review and Approval of Housing Production Plans," which is, I think, what we're doing.
I just pulled it off the web. It's Ja- January 2020 is the date on what I'm looking at, and that language already says.
Okay, just want to make sure we, we can find it and address it properly. So give Courtney just a quick chance to read it, because maybe we can solve it right now. And, um, having been involved with this since, um, last year already, I'm sorry, this is the first time I've heard that Conservation- I've heard that Conservation signs off on it as well, and I've been reviewing the documents, so.
First time I've heard of anything like that as well.
I'm trying to determine if this is in the case of comprehensive permit applications with an HPP as opposed to an actual HPP. Because a lot of this is about, again, the, this is about when you have an approved plan as opposed to, it's about how you measure your progress and about how you count things.
Again, I don't want to belabor this, and I think Brian is right, that we can vote on our adoption requirement without that, but I'll just point out that it's under 760 subsection four, the title of subsection four is Housing Production Plans. And then.
I'm still not getting to that, because I'm at a project eligibility for subsection four.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you what the, anyway, you can take a look at it. If I'm wrong, then it doesn't have to go to Conservation, and we can send it along to DHCD, you know, forthwith, but unless, if I'm not wrong, I would be more comfortable, and it sounds like at least Brian is, and maybe others as well on the Board of Selectmen, with complying with what the state regulation says. And again, I'm not being a pain in the neck, I will do a quick sidebar, but I thought the report was terrific. I thought it was an interesting history lesson, as well as a number of things. And the final thing is, I heard Mimi and Donna, I don't disagree with your reading of some of the language, but I'll point out that the, that a, the last full paragraph on page four, I think, is in line with what you were saying, where it says, "Southborough has made considerable progress over the past decade to meet its affordable housing obligations under Chapter 40B," and then goes on to talk about that. So I think, I think both things are accomplished in the report. It indicates what went on historically, but also the progress that's been made in the last 10 years, and I think that probably is an accurate statement.
And we absolutely want to do the right thing, so if it is the case that we have to do that, I don't recollect seeing any information from the Housing Production Plan from 2015 that it went anywhere else, but that doesn't mean that it didn't get missed then. So we will vet that, and if it's required, we will certainly forward the information to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, it's one of the downsides of having somebody involved who reads statutes and regulations for a living, so.
It's a good thing.
I will follow up with DHCD for clarification. In the meantime, just to expedite the process, you can go ahead and ask. It doesn't hurt to have your Conservation Commission also vote to endorse or adopt the plan. I do see the language that you're talking about, and if you go to the guidelines that are provided by DHCD, they do not include the Conservation Commission, and I haven't had it come up in a community before, so you're the first person to highlight that.
A groundbreaker.
I'm not even sure DHCD knows about it. It has never been part of the practice in like 15 years.
This is surprising, nobody who's been on the Board of Selectmen for the last year, so anyway.
Yeah, no, I mean, frankly, I'm more surprised than anything, because we focus so much on the guidelines, because that's what DHCD hammers us over, that we haven't been reviewing CMR, because, again, we're really interested in DHCD approving your plan. And, you know, this is, this is an oversight, and frankly, we need to talk to DHCD, because we have not been doing this, nobody else is doing it, and I'm wondering, you know, what the deal is. I'm not going to lie, I don't, you know, I don't have the answer to this, and I, like, what is going on, guys?
All right, I am now going to lower my hand, and the only other thing I'm going to say about this is I, when Brian makes the, calls the roll.
All right, so I'm hesitant to ask this, but are there any other questions by board members?
Hey, Brian, Sam?
Yes, Sam.
A quick comment, echo Marty's comments, I think it's a well-done report. I think it actually sort of sets the bar for something that we should be focusing more on going forward in terms of diversity of housing stock, so I think it gives some good ideas for things that we ought to focus on over the next year or two here, and see if we can make some more progress. So, good job, and I certainly support adopting this.
I'd also like to thank the ShopC members for their many, many meetings and working with Community Opportunities Group, Courtney and Roberta, for the duration to get to this point. So it's been a good collaborative effort.
I'd just like to echo that thank you to ShopC, your work, your effort, the hours that you've put into this, you're all volunteers, you've been very impressive, you've been awesome to work with, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other Board of Selectmen member, questions or comments? So with that, we'll do a roll call, vote ourselves. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Shea is aye as well.
All set, Brian?
Uh, yes.
Okay. We now turn it over to Dorian.
Oh, boy. I just want to thank my board, they are a phenomenal group of people, and we work really, really, really well together. This was definitely a team effort, and hats off to all of you, and Courtney and Roberta, you guys are amazing to work with. I thank you for everything, all your time and efforts, you have been an absolute joy. If that's a word in, you know, government, you guys have been a joy to work with, and just, it's been an absolute pleasure, and we are grateful for the job that you did for us, and thank you. And Sarah, just to cover all bases, could we get that Housing Production Plan over to Mark Casamato? With a note, I can work on that with you tomorrow if you want, asking them to please review it. Let's just get their vote on it and make sure we just cover all our bases. We need to get this to the DHCD and get this in practice, so we need to move on this. Our old one expired on March 1st, so we're a little behind here.
Yeah, we'll get it over to them tomorrow.
Okay, and Board of Selectmen, thank you so much for your cooperation and putting this through, and our wonderful planning board as well, and thank you for having us as part of your meeting this evening.
Thanks for joining us. Thanks for everybody getting together.
Dorian, can I just add one, one thing before we all go? I think ShopC and the Board of Selectmen need to adjourn, make motions to adjourn before we leave.
I'll second that, Lisa.
Thank you. And that goes for ShopC too, Dorian.
Okay.
All right. So Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Shea is aye as well. The Board of Selectmen are adjourned at 7:43. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, make a motion for the Board, for the ShopC Board to adjourn the meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, have to vote by a roll call. Jocinski, aye.
Brascio, aye.
Tom and Alex.
Stein, aye.
Alex, aye.
Ma Cooyar, aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you again, everyone, appreciate your effort.
Thank you, we'll see you around.
All right, take care, have a good meeting. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, next item on the planning board agenda is continued public hearing. Annual Town Meeting warrant article to amend Section 174-10 site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from January 27th, February 10th, February 24th, March 9th, March 23rd, April 13th, April 27th, May 7th, and May 7th. Turn it over to the Town Planner to give us an update.
All right, as you may have heard or are aware, the Annual Town Meeting is moving forward on this Saturday, June 13th at 1:00 PM. We've had several planning board meetings related to this site plan approval changes, the relatively minor modifications, and we haven't received any additional input to date. As Don mentioned, we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight public hearing sessions on this, and it started before the pandemic, so there was in-person meetings with attendance from the public and various groups if it was warranted, that they needed, they wanted to be there. And then we continued for a couple of public hearing sessions until we got clearer through the pandemic process. And that brings us here to tonight. We have prepared a what would you call it? What's it called? Yes, the report, I couldn't think of the word, thanks, Don. We prepared a draft report, which basically says that the planning board opened the public hearing for Annual Town Meeting Article 28 on January 27th, 2020, and was continued and closed possibly on June 8th. The planning board voted blank to support or not support Article 28. So we prepared document, if the planning board does decide to vote to go in that procedure, in that method, to report to town meeting, and I should say this, that when you report, when the planning board closes a public hearing for a zoning amendment, and they prepare a report to town meeting, this report allows the warrant article, even if it is voted down, to come back at the next town meeting and be revisited. So it's this report that allows you that option. If we don't report, or the planning board decides not to support, then if the town meeting votes down the changes to the zoning article, then you cannot come back for two years. But with a report and support from the planning board, then the article could come back at special town meeting in the fall, if by some chance it was voted down at this town meeting.
Thank you. So I think at this point, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Just one question, Don, if we close the public hearing, postpone the warrant articles, then if we want to discuss them in the future, we have to open a new public hearing for the warrant articles, for the special town meeting, or what happens then?
I think we asked that of Town Council, and the answer was, I'm not sure if it was quite clear, but I think if that's the case, that regardless of whether we have to or not, we would re-advertise and reopen a public hearing for any warrant article that we were bringing forward in any future town meeting.
Okay. So make a motion, we close the public hearing for Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article, amend Section 174-10 site plan approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lutrelia.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good, public hearing is closed. Next piece of work would be to entertain a motion to submit a report in the, and the report would be to support the article. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we submit the report and support the article for amend Section 174-10 site plan approval.
Second.
So if this motion carries, before we take the vote, Karina, could you read the report that we would send if this motion passes, which is to support? Could you read those sentences?
Yes, so there is a letter on Planning Board letterhead, which would be dated June 8th, 2020, which is today, to the Board of Selectmen, Town of Southborough, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, regarding Planning Board Report on Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article 28, referring to changes proposed by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Oh, I'm sorry, I grabbed the wrong one, I'm only slightly blind today. Here it is, I'm sorry, same thing, but it says, "Planning Board Report for Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article 30, referring to changes proposed by the Planning Board to the zoning code of the Town of Southborough, Article 3, entitled Use Regulations, by amending there to Section 174-10." Let me make sure it's the right thing. 174-10, entitled Site Plan Approval, as specified in the signed annual warrant dated March 28th, 2020. And it would state, "For the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board opened the public hearing for Annual Town Meeting Article 30 on January 27th, 2020, and was continued and closed on June 8th, 2020. The Planning Board voted blank to support or not support Article 30. Planning Board is prepared to speak to this decision at the Annual Town Meeting."
So the blank would be to support?
Correct, so it would read, "The Planning Board voted to support Article 30."
Any questions or comments? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lutrelia.
Houlihan, yes.
Thank you, so that takes care of the public hearing and the report for that warrant article. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, Town, Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article, amend Sections 174-9 Special Permit Requirements and 174-19 Extensions or Alterations. This public hearing is continued from January 27th, February 10th, February 24th, March 9th, March 23rd, April 13th, April 27th, and May 7th. Unless there's something different than what was stated for the previous, I still will turn this over to the Town Planner, because this is a ZBA-sponsored article, and we have some news. Karina?
Yes, that's correct. ZBA is sponsoring this article, and it has the same timeframes as the prior warrant article reviewed by the Planning Board. There were several meetings, of which the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Craig, I'm sorry, I lost of his name, it's, Sarah, tell me what his name is.
Oh, Craig Nicholson?
Craig Nicholson, I'm sorry, I'm losing it. I can't think, Craig Nicholson, who's Chairman of the Zoning Board, and Kate Barry, who works in the Building Department and assisting the Zoning Board of Appeals, attended Planning Board meetings to discuss the warrant article with the Planning Board, and have since, the Zoning Board of Appeals has since previously approved their warrant article. So now it's here in front of the Planning Board to close out. And I want to thank Sarah and Katie Barry for working on this so diligently to get it to this point. And that's where we are. Unless I missed something, Don?
No. Any more? So at this point, we would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Would you, would you like me to read the same document? You're good.
No, because it's, that's essentially the same report. The reason I asked you to read it the first time, so that the board members would know what they're voting on after we close the public hearing, but the public would also know what the report consists of. And you've done that. So we're at the point now of entertaining a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article, amend Sections 174-9 Special Permit Requirements and 174-19 Extensions and Alterations.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Very good. Public hearing is closed. Now we'll entertain a motion to submit a positive support report to the selectmen for town meeting. Mr. Mills?
Chairman, make a motion, we submit a favorable report to the town and the selectmen on annual town meeting warrant article amend sections 174-9 Special Permit Requirements and 174-19 Extensions and Alterations.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Is there any questions? Does anybody want that report read? Or do you believe that we've, we've covered that?
Good.
All, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Very good. Thank you. That takes care of that one. The next item on the agenda is a public, continued public hearing, annual town meeting warrant article. Update section 174-12.1 Outdoor Illumination. This public hearing is continued from January 27th, February 10th, February 24th, March 9th, March 23rd, April 13th, April 27th, and May 7th. This is similar. If there's no other questions or comments relative to this, we will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we close the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article update, section 174-12.1 Outdoor Illumination.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments? Anybody want to read the report for this? I think we've covered that. All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Very good. That takes care of those public hearings and warrant articles. The next item on the agenda is appointment, is a discussion item, appointment of board and committee members. We have the Public Works Planning Board Committee, the Master Plan Committee, and the Deed Research Committee. Now, it's my understanding that all three of these appointments are up for, uh, to be, or expire on June 30th. And we do have one more meeting planned between now and June 30th. So we could make appointments or an appointment tonight, or we could utilize this meeting to put the word out one more time for anyone who wants to be considered for appointment. And, and then actually make the appointments on June, what's the date, Karina? Our next planning board.
22nd, June 22nd.
June, June 22nd.
Thanks, Sarah. You're welcome.
In, I guess in view of the fact that we still have another meeting and that this is an agenda item tonight, allowing the public to be aware of these board and committee appointments, uh, I don't have a problem holding our vote off until June 22nd. But I'll open up to the board for your opinions. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, that's fine. We can hold off. That's fine. Uh, just kind of, I hate to revert back to the previous warrant article, though. Do, did we have to do a report on that? Because we didn't vote on submitting a favorable report on that one. The lighting by law.
Oh, that's correct. You just closed it. We need a second motion for the lighting by law.
Good catch.
Thanks, Andy.
So that we can, we can come back to that, Don, but I just didn't want to forget the point that I know.
Very good. Thank you.
So I, I'm fine with going forward and we can wait till the next meeting for other appointments.
Jesse?
If we wanted to knock off the DPW planning board post, I mean, I'm ready to make a motion to reappoint Sam Stivers to that. I haven't heard of any other, anybody else interested in the position.
Okay, see what the others.
So I make a motion to reappoint Sam Stivers to the.
Oh, 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 hold, hold on, Jesse. Let's, let's see, let's have comments from Mrs. Latrell.
I'm fine with appointing someone to the DPW planning board and holding off on the rest if that's and also I would ask that I'm appointed to the master plan committee representing the planning board. So I'd ask the planning board if they want to recommend you can think about that until June 22nd.
Did, did everybody catch that?
No.
No, Mimi, it's hard to hear you.
Mimi wants us to either appoint her tonight to the master plan or think about it. We'll, we'll get to that. We're, um, okay, she's, so you're, you're fine with being considered for reappointment tonight for master plan? And you're also fine with entertaining the motion to appoint Sam to DPW? Marnie?
Yeah, I'm fine on the Public Works and the Master Plan Committee. And help me if I'm, I'm wrong, Karina, maybe as I'm reviewing this, the, all the terms that are required for us. So is, um, and maybe Mimi, you can help me. The Master Plan Committee, is it looking, so we only have one? And the others are appointed by Board of Selectmen, is that correct?
No, um, it's the opposite. The Board of Selectmen appoint two seats to the Master Plan Committee. And the remainder is appointed by the planning board. So where you see, um, I don't know if you received.
I have it in front of me, yeah.
The asterisks, this was pulled off of a larger spreadsheet. So the asterisk is Board of Selectmen Approval. Where everyone else is, um, voted on by the planning board.
Okay.
The other roles.
So I'm in favor of the master plan for Mimi and the Public Works and then holding off on, on anything else? Deeds Research Committee?
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
So I'll, I'll just do one. I, I make a motion that we reappoint Sam Stivers to the Department of Public Works Planning Board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Is Sam still on, Sarah? Sam gone?
He is not. He left.
Okay.
We currently have no attendees.
Okay. Mr. Stein?
I recommend that, or sorry, I make a motion that we reappoint Mimi Latrell to the Master Plan Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, renownedingly, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, it's staying.
Houlihan, yes?
Oh, that's great. Okay. And then the deed research, um, did you want to? Now, I guess we'll, we'll just say that we're going to take care of that on the 22nd, right, Karina?
Correct. That would be best.
Okay. Next item on, on the agenda is a discussion, Site Plan Public Hearing slash A and R Public Meeting dash Review Process. Now, I asked, Karina and I talked about this, and I asked to have this put on the agenda because I wanted to get your opinion. And it was, uh, I guess several days ago that we decided on this. And since then, the, the governor has, you know, announced that things are opening up even more. But we have one A and R that's out there. It hasn't been formally submitted, but we're aware of it. And Karina has been in contact with the owner of that. And we also have a site plan uh, out there. There's, again, has not been formally submitted. And perhaps the reason for both not being formally submitted is because town planner has explained that it's been the board's desire to take no actions on these in accordance with the state guidelines until, you know, we're able to open these meetings up again to the public and make it easier for the public to see and participate. So we're not quite there yet, but it would seem to me that we can start the process at least for a site plan because it takes several weeks between us launching or actually accepting the application, reviewing it, submitting it to the town clerk, notifying the newspaper of the public hearing, having it in the paper for two weeks. And then the third week, we have the first hearing. So it's, it, if, if we were to start with a site plan process now, that site plan public hearing, the earliest it could be, whether it's on Zoom or it's, uh, in a, in the town hall, it would be late July. So what I would like is to get your opinion to see if we can do the best we can, accept these applications and let the process start. And if we're not able to hold the public hearing for the site plan like we, we always have, which was open to the public physically, then we'll just do it the best we can with, with this, the Zoom. And the same with the A and R, although there's no public hearing, that's a public meeting. So just wanted to get your opinion if we should continue the way we're going or if we feel comfortable in letting the process begin for the, at least for the site plan. Andrew?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with starting the ball rolling and, uh, as long as the applicant is understands we're doing the best we can. And if things change in the future with state guidelines, then it might get delayed. But, yeah, that's, that makes sense to me to start, start the things in motion.
Jesse?
So my concern is I do a lot of these, I, uh, phone. So I, you know, technologically, I'm not sure how ready I am to view any really, you know, any docs. I can, I can view some docs by forwarding them to my work computer. But if when we get into a site plan, that's a little bit higher level than viewing, say, like, like, you know, I can forward a housing production gap and read through that. I don't know. I'm just wondering technologically what that would entail that's different uh, from what we've been doing up till now on Zoom.
Yeah, you're right.
I made, yeah.
You, you're right. And Karina and I talked about this, that if we launch, you know, right away, then the earliest public hearing would be late July. But we would tell the applicant now that if, if the site plan, for example, would take two or three public hearings to get to the point of a vote, under the way we've always done it, which is open meetings in, in, um, in a physical location, two or three, four public hearings, that we would tell the applicant now that because of what you're just concerned about, that we may, that the process may take considerably longer or be continued out to a point where we would have the public hearing, a physical meeting. And if the, if the proponent doesn't agree to that, it's still within our power to start the process and then open the public hearing, listen to a presentation, and then continue the public hearing, not to the next meeting, but to a meeting considerably out there where we'd have some confidence that we could have, you know, have the more traditional site plan public hearing. In other words, the proponent would know that one process we're used to and, and would go probably a lot smoother. But the second process, which is with the Zoom, is better than nothing. And we'll just do the best we can.
I, I, I guess I'm okay with that. With, with the caveat that I, I would recommend waiting if I, if it was me, if I were the proponent, based on what I know and my experience on the planning board, I would hold out for, uh, in-person meetings. Um, and also would recommend, I can't remember if we were just relying on the drop boxes at this point or if everything was going to be a hard copy, dropped off at the house. But.
We, we've received hard copies. Yeah, Jesse, we have received hard copies.
Okay.
They, they came in right at the beginning when all this started to happen. So they weren't filed with the town clerk. We've been holding on to them, waiting for this pandemic to pass. So we would be distributing hard copies that were sitting in the office for quite some time now.
So I guess I, I would, I would reluctantly cooperate if there were, uh, hard copies of all documents dropped, dropped off at my home or made available to me.
Yeah, we, we, um, us having, the board members having those important documents is essential. But the sense, there's even more sensitivity, though, I think, to make sure that the public, the neighbors to the site plan are, um, have equal access, access or adequate access so that they can fully participate. And, um, you know, either go along with it or make comments or disagree with, with it. But making sure that the process keeps the public fully available to comment. Amy?
Um, I'm fine. I'll go along with your recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Houlihan?
I support the recommendation. I'm fine with proceeding.
So that'll give the town planner the green light to reengage with the proponents, one for the site plan and one for the, an A and R. And if they want to press on, then they'll formally submit their applications and they'll be reviewed like all others. And then if they're fine, complete, it'll be submitted to the town clerk and the clock will start ticking.
And, um, let me just point out there were two A and Rs potentially, yeah, in the, in the works.
Okay. Do the best we can. That's all we can do. Next item, anything else on that? Next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, the planner's report. Karina?
All right, just quickly, I wanted to point out that, um, 118, 120 Turnpike, if you recall, that's Kuro Enterprises. They, uh, have been working with town council on the land gift for the 6.2 acre triangular portion of, uh, land in the back that they're gifting. And they will be coming to the planning board for a ma, a major site plan approval extension and an A and R, probably sometime in August, if that's viable for them. So they're pending that. I want to point out Jim Hegarty, I full, uh, from Jim Hegarty, an email in the change in process of getting sworn in. He, he, he explained at the department head meeting that people were getting sworn in over and over and over again and that he found that it may not be necessary to do that. So I provided you with a document that explains his approach to. approach to when you're appointed now and you get sworn in, there's some things you don't have to keep repeating if you are, if you continue to be in a certain role. So I suggest looking at that. If you have any questions, let me know, and I can ask Jim Hegarty, or you can ask him yourself. I want to point out that our town accountant, Heidi Krieger, is retiring soon, and the Board of Selectmen are in the process of potentially appointing a new town accountant. I think they're addressing that tomorrow. So there's some changes there. I don't know who the person is yet, but I'm sure whoever it is will make them feel comfortable and happy to be a part of this team in the townhouse. Then the final thing is we have to determine whether the Planning Board wants to have a pre ATM meeting this year. Annual town meeting is scheduled to be outside to try to your school. And typically, the Planning Board holds a meeting about one hour prior to address any thing that may come up during the town meeting. I believe the Board of Selectmen are still working to, the Board of Selectmen is, I believe is going to proceed with their. They initiated a process where they were going to try and handle all the money articles upfront as a phase one, and then address the non-critical warrant articles to be postponed to a fall town meeting and then handle some other financial warrant articles. So they were trying to keep it streamlined. I think that's still the, the goal. So I wanted to know if the Planning Board felt a need to have a pre ATM meeting still, since we've had this one this evening.
I don't think we need one, but.
Yeah, I would not, I don't, I don't think we need one. I don't think anything is really going to pop up.
I don't think we need one, but going back to Andrew's point a minute ago, do we still have to vote to submit the report to?
Yes.
We're going to vote, we're going to vote on that.
That will be the motion just before the one to adjourn.
Yeah, other than that, no, we don't need a pre ATM meeting.
Mimi? Did, did you already?
I agree. I don't think we need a meeting. All the hearings are closed, so we don't really have anything to talk about.
And Marnie?
Yeah, I agree with that, everybody.
Do we know who will, who of our five board members will attend on Saturday?
I'll be there.
I'm a probable.
No, Jesse will be there.
All right.
I can actually probably look out my window. And Marnie?
I was going to say, Don, you have no excuse, buddy.
Well, I do, and I might, I might, I might miss this first time in, I don't know, maybe thirty, thirty years, but I'm not as young as you guys, and it's just one less lot of old people go anyway, so. But I'm not, I'm not as, I'm not as young and I might, we'll see how it goes, but.
No tailgating at your house afterward?
I didn't say that. No, that's, that's far fewer than, than hundreds of town meeting members. But so we know that Mimi, you're going to, if there's any discussion on the site plan, you've got that. And Marnie, you've got the outdoor illumination. So the only other major concern that we're involved with for a vote would be our budget. And normally, if there's any questions with that, I'm asked to, the chair was asked to speak. But I think, Karina, you've, you've been working with advisory and town administrator, and you feel that there's a comfort level with the, the budget that we've submitted?
I do. I think that, you know, we were asked to trim it down and all, it was, it was kind of a hard task to do because everything in the budget is really important. You know, we, we don't put a lot of fluff in there per se, you know, we have programs that we try to maintain that we started with open space, and we have the Master Plan Committee support. And, you know, there's a level of training that we like to maintain during the year so we can stay up to speed. And now that Sarah's on board, I, I really want to make sure we keep some of that to have that opportunity so that we can not only network but stay on top of information. So when we were asked to trim the budget, that's where we cut was the training. Because I didn't feel like there was anywhere else we could cut that it wouldn't hurt so much.
We, Karina, we don't have to go into the details. It's just,
Okay.
we, you know, in past years, we've had different levels of pushback or support for our, you know, submitted budgets. And at times, we've given in to the pushback and gained support from the selectmen. Other times, we've said, no, it's our budget. We understand that you don't, you don't like it, but let's let the people vote. We'll take our chances. Sometimes we win, sometimes we lose. But right now, as far as you know, the budget that we've submitted is being supported by the town administrator and the selectmen and, and advisory?
Yes, I believe advisory, I'm not sure where their meeting turned out, but advisory, at least the chair, had mentioned that she felt that our budget that was originally submitted would, would be the best one and not to cut our budget beyond to the 2% tax or the 0% tax increase what we were asked to prescribe to. So the one we submitted is workable, otherwise we wouldn't have submitted it that way. But the, ideally, the original budget would help the department best.
Hey, Don? Good. Yeah, go ahead, Andrew.
I'm happy to meet with, say, Karina for a half an hour on Monday, I mean, on Friday, to go over the budget, and if there are any questions, field those if they come up at town meeting, if you can attend. So.
Thank, thank you.
Yep.
Sure, that would be great. And if we could do it maybe Thursday, if you're available, but if not Friday, it's good too.
Okay.
Will you reach out to me? Let me know when you.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
I was trying to look at my calendar with all this, but.
We have, is that the end of the Planner's Report? We got approval of meeting minutes, May 18th. Were those? Were those on the the website?
Yes, yes.
I didn't get a chance to look at them. Or I looked for them, but I guess I, I didn't see them. But if the rest of the board, if the rest of the board's fine, we'll entertain a motion. Mr. Mills?
Make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes from May 18th as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
And back to Mr. Mills.
I make a motion that we send a favorable recommendation for annual town meeting Warren article. Update section 174-12 dot 1 Outdoor Illumination to the selectmen of the town.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Anything from you, Kate?
Oh, nothing. I'll be at town meeting, though, for anybody that wants to say hi. I'm a working girl that day.
Sarah?
Nope, that's all for me.
Sarah, nice job on the housing production plan.
Oh, thanks. I appreciate that. Yeah.
Great work.
Yeah, super.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Karina, too.
Yeah, oh, you're welcome. Sarah was a tremendous asset. I couldn't, I can't say more. I mean,
Agreed.
She's fabulous. We're so happy that you're with us.
Totally agree.
I love the work, so.
And we have a town planner that is an outstanding manager recognizing recognizing that Sarah is fully capable and gives her the green light to, to go ahead and, and, and work it. And she sure, sure did. So it's a great, great team we got.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Oh, one quick question. Karina, can you do eight o'clock in the morning on Thursday? Or 8:30?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Mimi, Mimi?
I did.
I read her lips. She said yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, Sarah, you're, we're adjourned.
All righty, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.